I would also like to acknowledge our partners from Albany Cert. They've been amazing. Susan Yaman is our lead instructor. Blake Yaman is the president of Albany Cert, Inc. And also Bill Springer, who comes from Berkeley to come help out and do training with us. So it's really a robust and building network with the communities around us. Berkeley, El Cerrito, Kensington, a little bit of Richmond pretty soon. So they are our safety net, and I can't emphasize that enough. The potential that could have, not if, but will happen if there's a major earthquake, or when there's a major earthquake. Hopefully not anytime soon, obviously. The work that the Cert folks are able to do takes that pressure off of your first responders, both fire, EMS, law enforcement, so that we can concentrate on the true critical emergencies. So this is the safety net for us. So I'd actually thank you personally for going through the training. I'd like to introduce and have Susan and Blake come up and talk a little bit about this class of 13 people who passed the final.
I'm short, gotta pull that down. So we have 13 graduates, many of whom are traveling for work or family right now. So I think we have seven representative. This class worked really hard. The dedication infinitely impresses me how hard these people work to make sure that they learn the material and feel comfortable with it. And of course, there's no such thing as 100% mastery. But their scores on the finals, I mean, they're in the 90s. We had 100. These people scored really high. And in the actual hands-on bay that the fire department puts on, they probably were the most organized and together class we've had yet. So they're smaller but mighty. And I consider it a privilege and an honor to be able to spend retirement time doing something that I think really matters. I've been in Albany since I was 12, and we raised our children here, and it's very near and dear to me. And I lived through a disaster at five. And so the potential is very real for me, and I think that's where my commitment comes from. So thank you for the privilege of being able to be your teacher.
Hello, I'm Blake Yaman, and I'm gonna have to raise that up, sorry. So I'm also a Cert instructor and managing the program, Cert program here. And I wanted to share one of the things that we did with the Albany Cert group, which has an MOU with the City of Albany and Fire Department to provide the services. We're all volunteer organizations, so all the money goes directly in the program. We applied for a Cal OES grant, and we're awarded a $25,000 grant to add three native-speaking languages and people who don't speak English in the community. So we're going through, and we have an 18-month timeline to do that, so we just got awarded that, and we'll be working on that. Pretty exciting to add more people into a similar common language of how to keep ourselves safe, so excited about that. Thank you.
Without further ado, some certificates. We could stand in front of the dais. We're gonna do the oath first. Yep, we'll do the oath. And then we'll do a picture right after that.
Are they gonna post? I'm working on it, okay. I just wanna tell them, wait a minute. I don't know. It might be too small. Ah, the choice is checked. Yeah, see, get ready to see. Flash the razor, right hand. Okay, so just raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I am, state your name. I am, state your name. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign, domestic. Against all enemies, foreign, domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. For purpose of evasion. For purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. The due basis upon which I'm about to enter. The due basis upon which I am about to enter. Take away your hands. And thank you all your honor.
Stay up here. So, simplify our, if that you'd give us a seat. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
Just want to add a heartfelt thank you to the council for your continued support of making sure we can have as robust of a, be prepared as possible. And for folks that haven't taken the Cert training, we'll have a fall class. Check your City of Albany Activity Guide for that information, and also our website for that information as well.
And the newsletter.
And the newsletter. All right, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Anyone in the room that wants to make a comment? Any council members?
I just want to say, I'm so shocked that it's already another year that we've graduated and others. But it's fantastic to see the community involved and being there and getting the training that's necessary to help our community.
Yeah, I'll second that thought. And I had a chance to talk with the Cert program just before this, and really excited that El Cerrito and Kensington are really working and starting up their program, and that Richmond will also be starting to do that as well. I think this is definitely one of those situations where the more of us as residents and citizens of the area that are ready and able to help in time of a disaster, the better we'll all be off. So I'm really excited about this program. Moving on to item five, City Manager's report. City Manager, may the council please have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Following that Cert graduation, I'd like to recognize our fire department. A team has been deployed to the Point Fire in Sonoma County with a crew of three. That fire is near Lake Sonoma on the western edge of Dry Creek Valley, and unfortunately is only 20% containment at least overnight. So we wish them our support as they continue to work to manage that fire with our other regional crews. We had a wonderful opening last week for our Ocean View Pickleball Court. Thank you to those who could attend and to our community for literally breaking in the courts that day. If you haven't been out there, please go take a look. It's a really great addition to Ocean View Park and bringing a lot of new energy, which is so welcome. This again is thanks to funding from Measure M Parcel Tax, as well as Proposition 68 Per Capita Grant Program. We have a call for artists for the Albany mural project. The submission window will close this Thursday, June 20th, at 4:00. And again, this is for four columns along the bark tracks on the Aloney Greenway, a great opportunity to beautify cement columns. So please take a look at this opportunity and get involved to help further beautify our greenway. Another reminder, as I've mentioned, San Francisco Opera is coming to Albany, and this was a welcome new event. Albany was selected out of a very short list of applicants, and this will be coming to our very own Solano Avenue Thursday, June 27th, at 1:00 PM. It will be at the corner of Evelyn and Solano Avenue. Some of the street will be closed, so please be mindful of that. And please take the opportunity to enjoy this art on Solano through theater and opera. We have a number of businesses participating as well, with a lot of deals and features throughout the event. Fourth of July is right around the corner, and our Parks Group Recreation and Community Services are very busy with the event I just mentioned, as well as Fourth of July right around the corner. This will be held annually at Memorial Park, and it will include the usual and more: live music, delicious food trucks, kids' activities, and free bike parking, as well as a city information booth. As usual, everything at this event is free, except for the food, of course, so please take the opportunity to come enjoy your community together. Through our summer camps and Friendship Club, these have started this week and are basically at capacity, which is really encouraging to see that our community and younger people are able to use this opportunity throughout the summer. There are still a few remaining spots in some of the programs, and they span all across the board in terms of activities. So please check out the camp enrollment to keep your little ones busy. You may see banners up similar to Fourth of July with some advance notice about another very popular event in our community. National Night Out will be held on August 6th. This is for block parties around the city, so please sign up in advance. Sometimes we do fill in terms of how many blocks can actually be closed. So make sure you organize your block. It's a great opportunity to get to know your neighbors, and also a visit from our city staff, usually city-elected officials, and of course, our public safety departments. A reminder that city offices will be closed this Wednesday in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. And an even more important reminder to celebrate Juneteenth, which will occur this weekend, June 23rd. And it will be from 10 to 6 on Masonic Avenue, just north of Solano Avenue by the Abrams Claghorn Gallery. It enters a celebration commencing now in its fourth year of being held and is just improving year over year with all kinds of activities, live music, a Makers Fair, an art show. So walk on over and enjoy this event. I'd also like to share that today contractors began a gamma survey at the Albany Bulb. This is the first step in the city's investigation work plan approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board back in May to determine whether industrial waste materials containing alum mud were historically accepted at the Albany Bulb, which is a closed landfill site. You may see a couple of individuals conducting survey work, and we ask that visitors, please give them the ability to conduct that important work. We have a active live website, Albany Bulb, which we are posting to on an ongoing basis as we receive more information or any updates regarding the survey work, feedback from the Regional Board who regulates this work, and as the project continues forward for more information. I want to underscore that we are working to prioritize, and will continue to prioritize, the health and safety of all of our community who enjoys this open space area. And we'll make sure, as I've mentioned, to keep our website updated. If any other urgent information is necessary, we will be certain to provide that through additional channels. And that completes my report.
Thank you for your report, City Manager. Any public comments online? Any public comments from anyone inside the room? Any council member comments? I wanted to thank city staff for the pickleball opening. I had a lot of fun. I am now 0-2 in my pickleball, long and glorious pickleball career. First one was a first attempt in learning. It didn't go so well. My second attempt in learning didn't go so well, but I will be on the courts a third time, and hopefully that'll be the charm. So we'll see. Really excited about the opera on Solano Avenue. Special thanks to Councilmember Hanson Romero for helping make that happen. And really excited about all the events that are coming up for the city. With that, we'll move on to Good at the City. This is for attendees to provide council comments, information, and questions on items that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hand now in the room or online. It looks like we have some people online, and we have some people in the room. Sorry, the city clerk will call people up.
So Stephen A. Celeste M. S. Go ahead and line up, please.
My wife is gonna assist me with the multimedia production. Good evening. I am Dr. Stephen Alpert. Those following this meeting should be aware that all city officials are informed of the issues and questions being reviewed tonight. You are not being blindsided. This is now my fifth time requesting that the city explain why it follows only the minimum state mandate notifying those within 300 feet of new construction, regardless of project size, when in fact, larger, wider areas alerts are permissible. Whereas the city follows its approved ordinance of only alerting those within 300 feet of new construction, this practice is inappropriate for a large multi-story project which will unpack all of Albany, such as the case for the five-story mixed commercial residential structure proposed for 1600 Solano. Only 73 properties were informed of these public hearings for this project. I was not notified, given that I reside about 400 feet from the building site. I distributed a notice highlighting this to over 3,700 Albany households. I spoke with almost 150 individuals, and all agreed that this practice limits public discourse so that the Planning and Zoning Commission can propose and the council approve new building projects under the radar by purposely notifying only the minimum number of residents mandated by state law. I suggested that the city could draft new ordinances which distinguish between small-scale projects for which 300-foot notification is appropriate from larger multi-story projects which merit wider notification. Attorney Subramaniam has declined to comment on the legality of this two-tier system. This bears directly on concerns of legal issues raised by Councilman Jordan. During the April 1st council meeting, Councilman Jordan stated that existing state laws would create legal exposure if the city adopted different rules for public notification based on project size. Pursuant to my document request, City Clerk Schu responded that no state laws support this assertion. Councilman Jordan is now the second city official to invent and cite non-existent state law to avoid addressing the issue of 300-foot notification. The first was Community Development Director Bond, who falsely asserted that state law precluded Albany from issuing citywide alerts for new notification. The proof that Director Bond is not factual is present in the very document, 2002 Planning and Zoning Law, Volume 1 and 2. He forwarded pursuant to my records request. Director Bond cited A4 under notification procedures reproduced verbatim here. Take the thing off the list. However, on the same page as 5C, which reads, "In addition to the notice required by this section, a local agency may give notice of a hearing in any other manner it deems necessary or desirable." Questions: What is the underlying issue that caused two city officials to fabricate and cite non-existent law? The practice of only notifying those within 300 feet clearly limits public discourse, allowing the council to push through new projects no matter how inappropriate with minimal public awareness. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My wife is now going to bring related issues.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Dr. Celeste Marks. City officials have been advised that several California municipalities, such as Beverly Hills, have expanded their minimum notification for new proposed construction to a radius of 1,000 feet and forwarded notices at least 20 days before a hearing. Here verbatim is that Beverly Hills ordinance, which reads, "Notice of the meeting should be provided to owners and residential occupants within 1,000 feet plus block phase via standard mailed notice at least 20 days prior to the meeting date." During the May 20 council meeting, the city attorney gave an impassioned defense of the city's compliance with the minimum state mandate notifying properties within 300-foot radius of the construction site when notices mailed at least 10 days before a meeting, and related that the city will continue to follow this minimum mandate. During her May 20 remarks, the city attorney asserted that adopting a wider notification would somehow pose additional time and financial impediments for the city and/or more likely a project applicant. Let's examine the assertion by doing the math. For the project at 1600 Solano, a total of 73 properties were notified by mail. The postage-reached notice is $0.63. 73 properties times $0.63 comes to $46. Let's assume Albany were to implement a 1,000-foot notification area. A circle with a 1,000-foot radius is 1.1 times as large as that with a radius of 300 feet, assuming similar property densities. 11.2 times 73 properties equals 818 properties. Mailing notices to these 18 properties comes to $500, $515. Hardly much of an additional burden for a project applicant. We have also had a chance to look at the practices of Beverly Hills, which put forth general plan policies for our planning commission. Under Land Use Elements, Policy LU2.1, they mandate that new structures maintain and enhance the character, distribution, built form, scale, and aesthetic qualities of the city's distinctive residential neighborhoods, business districts, corridors, and open spaces. Further, they policy that new construction and renovation of existing buildings contribute to and complement the existing development. As far back as 1978, Beverly Hills recognized that they need to consider commercial transition Accordingly, Dr. Alpert and I are again requesting that the issue of 300-foot notification for new construction be submitted as a formal agenda item to allow for extended in-depth public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
City can do better. Much better.
I think I've seen most of you now. But I'm really here to support Dr. Alpert's suggestion of expanding the notification of construction. Regarding my background, I've been in Albany 40 years. I have a state license in geotechnical engineering, and I've maintained a small consulting business in Albany for more than 20 years. During that time, I've met quite a few different homeowners. I've worked on houses, quite a few, I've worked on public buildings. The homeowners vary a lot, as you probably all know. There are some are older, some are younger, some are new, they're maybe just arrived. And so they're not necessarily familiar with Albany and what's going on in the city. Again, regarding the 300-foot distance that's been kicked around here many times, I'm sure you're aware, this is one block in the short direction. And so from Ventura to Lary, that's it. That's the notice. So it's two rows of houses. Or same thing with Ordway to Ventura. And so I'm talking about the short distance of the block. It's really not very far. I did spend some time looking at sites, and I know Mr. Bond has been active in planning and construction, at least from his internet resume. But truthfully, as a professional and as a citizen, I'm rather baffled at the city's resistance in notifying we tax-paying citizens. You know, we all love the community, the urban village by the bay, so to speak. There's this resistance for even taking the next step and saying, "Let's take a look at this." Personally, I think something like 1,000 feet is very reasonable. That's three blocks. Three blocks, if it's a big project, that's not a very far distance, actually. And so, in conclusion, I encourage the city to reconsider broadening the disclosure of major construction projects. There you go.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you to the council for the opportunity to address the council. So I'm here on behalf of Pier Street Neighbors, which is a group of concerned residents on Pier Street. We wanted to bring up two items for the council. Firstly, we wanted to thank, place on record, our thanks to the council and the city for the prompt response to our concerns that were brought up a couple weeks ago regarding the sign that was erected on 578 Cleveland Ave. Thank you, especially to Councilmember Jordan. Also, your email was appreciated. The second thing we wanted to bring up was to maybe get any sort of update on what we can expect in terms of enforcement on this issue. We'll note that the P&amp;Z meeting, the last one, was canceled, and the next one is also canceled, so we're bringing it up here. As you know, this is essentially a business that's erected a billboard lit with spotlights on Cleveland, which is visually impacting the dense urban zone on Pier Street, which has about 1,000 residential units over there. Wanted to note that this zone or this stretch of Albany does not have any sort of lighting of that nature. Even the Caltrans signs are not lit because it's a residential area, even though the parcel in question is in a CM. though the parcel in question is in a CMX zone. Was concerned to look into the city's documentation and realize that maybe a conditional permit was granted way back in 2019, pre-pandemic. So would be interested to learn if that was actually finalized, or what's the enforcement angle that we can expect here. Also, would want to make the council aware that the proprietor has a history of acting with impunity in terms of illegal, unpermitted work. And the item in question, the erection of these three large signs, also doesn't appear to be in line with the permit application, which seems like it was narrowly approved, 3-2, back in 2019. So, yeah, to conclude, thanks, and any additional information would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
He's asking if your mic is on because you're coming across faintly, City Clerk.
I didn't realize my hearing had degraded.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Yes, your turn.
Good evening. A month ago, the council considered the Keynes-Adams bikeways. It was billed as an evaluation, but any reasonable observer of the process, nothing got evaluated. There was nothing in the resolution to the, signed by the city council, that even discussed the evaluation. It'd be hard to argue that the council approved the existing pilot project when they in fact recommended and proposed major changes to the project. So that raises the question, what's the status of the pilot at this point? And that question may be around for a while. City staff announced that they plan to seek a Caltrans grant in order to design new bike facilities, after which I think they'll have to identify some capital improvement funds. The pilot project took four years to build. How long is this going to take? And what happens in the meantime? In particular, what happens with regards to parking? Will Albany continue to, despite statements by the city attorney, despite the statement on the website describing the Keynes-Adams bikeways, will staff continue to fail to enforce current parking laws? In effect sanctioning wrong-way parking on Keynes and Adams? But I would submit that one could make an equal protection argument under the law, in this case, the city's failure to apply the law throughout Albany. So people should be, I would consider the opportunity to park the wrong way in any street in Albany. I think the clean, intelligent way to handle this, the honest way to handle this would have been to have declared the pilot a failure and restored the old bicycle, the old traffic configurations. And at some point in the future, when the city is ready to build this new contra-flow concept, at that point in time, we can have a new pilot. But in the interim, we should restore the traffic patterns that existed for more than 50 years. All right? And I would encourage the council, you're all looking like you're paying attention, I would encourage the city council to take that up at some point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Catherine, Albany resident and homeowner. Wanted to say thank you so much for having the time to speak here today. I want to thank you also for the Climate Action Declaration that was passed recently. I would love to see that incorporated into each meeting in some sort of way, maybe with the end acknowledgement, maybe some other way where we can try to bring this lens of climate action and urgency, whatever it is we face, to the actions that we're taking in other areas around the city with air TV charging or other things. I also want to show that I support comprehensive bike lanes. I biked here tonight to get to this meeting, and on the Kane Street Avenue, there's some cars going by very fast. So I do support any amount of protected bike lanes we can get, whether it's contra-flow or dedicated bike lanes to help increase safety and also reduce carbon emissions so we can burn fat, not oil. Want to also support affordable housing developments and general housing development in general. So I am in very much support of any more development we can get in corridors like San Pablo and Solano, where we can give people the walkable, bikeable neighborhood that we all value and help reduce our emissions by having more housing in more transit-friendly, active transportation corridors. So want to counter the previous speaker. Couple more climate action things as part of ACAC, Albany Climate Action Coalition, to support more multifamily EV charging and induction in the community center, other showcases where we are teaching people how to cook. Why not teach them on induction? We have cooked-up lending program, but we don't have induction stoves yet in the community center. We're teaching people to cook on gas old technology. And gas stoves emit nitrogen oxides, it's bad for health, it's bad for climate, and there's better alternatives. Also want to increase enforcement around California guidelines on plastic ware by request only in restaurants. I've been handed a plastic straw at a restaurant that I didn't ask for, and that's something that we need to educate restaurants about, that they can reduce their cost of supplies and also help reduce plastic waste in the oceans and more. So last comment I want to make is about a dedicated climate action manager. Richmond has an environmental manager, El Cerrito has one, and curious if we can have a dedicated role for this so we can make this a priority for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Nick Peterson, I'm a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition also. Catherine just spoke. I want to second her comment about bringing more recognition to the climate emergency declaration that was just made. It's more than just the words. The city has recognized that this is a very urgent issue and that we need to act as much as possible on it, that every single action and expense the city makes should be looked at through a lens of climate emergency. We know from reports from the United Nations studies on climate that things are worse, not better. Planet is cooking more. We're into now the 13th hottest month ever on record. That's over a year of hottest months. And just because our city is naturally cool and is in a zone that's close to the ocean doesn't mean that the rest of California is suffering or the rest of the world is suffering. Large areas of the world are suffering. And as a first-world nation and a rather affluent community, in, you know, the fifth-largest economy in the world, it behooves us to do as much as we can to lead the way and to show. And I think part of that is coming up with better strategies, faster strategies, and organized and coordinated efforts in the city to bring about actions that show the citizens of our city that we take it seriously. I mean, what the city does as city staff, city professionals, reflects the attitudes and the values of our community. And so it's very important that the city lead and not follow, you know, not wait till all the citizens have electric vehicles before the city starts looking at electric vehicles. And not to be a tired saw, but, you know, we had an opportunity to just convert one tiny little three-wheel cart that goes around and gives tickets to cars and marks cars to an electric vehicle, and that was tossed out. I've looked at the communications on that, and there really wasn't much of a particularly good reason to do that. There's some historical stuff that's now been addressed and isn't a problem anymore, and it just seems like we're doing business as usual. So I encourage the city to really look at getting someone in place with authority to really manage this and bring the departments together and have them act accordingly. That's a very important thing to do. I also wanted to say I was very pleased to see the CERT graduations, and I think there's an opportunity for the CERT program to develop more community members as block captains that would then allow us to have better communication throughout the city, neighborhood by neighborhood, and even addressing issues such as climate change, which of course is the greatest emergency confronting humanity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, this is Margie Marks. I'm calling about the 25% noncompliance for land boards to register rental units in Albany. What I believe needs to happen as soon as possible is that the city institute a penalty for failure to register either a regular rental unit or an Airbnb short-term type rental unit. The penalty needs to be large enough to act as a deterrent. Maybe the Financial Advisory Committee could come up with what would be appropriate. The city could put out a notice giving a two- or three-month grace period to registered properties, and then a penalty phase begins. Thoughts and prayers won't work this issue out. We need some real action on this. Also, there's presently a bill in the state senate, 584, that would levy a 15% tax on all short-term rentals. The money collected would be designated for housing. So I am coming to you very soon with a proposal on short-term rental taxes. Right now Albany has the lowest in the area, which is about 10%. And I'm doing some research on what the market will bear, and we'll get back to you soon. In the meantime, please don't let us live in the city with 25% of any group breaking the law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
This is Lucinda Young. I have a few comments. I first want to applaud council's efforts to increase affordable multifamily housing in our community. I'd also like to applaud you for passing the Climate Emergency Declaration, and I would like to see that better communicated to staff. I wholeheartedly second Nick Peterson's comments concerning the urgency for the council to act on climate and implement our Climate Action Adaptation Plan. I am a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition, and the coalition, several of us expressed concern at the last meeting about the authorization of your purchase of another gas parking enforcement vehicle. We did receive a response to our public information request for records relating to that purchase. It was good to see, the records did make clear that the city has two parking enforcement vehicles, and the request is to replace the older one, which was purchased around 2016, not the 2020. So I'm glad to learn that it's not the four-year-old vehicle that's been replaced. However, the manufacturer does indicate that these vehicles often are used for 20 years, so that may be something still to look at. The records request included the staff report, which stated that staff had found significant mechanical issues with the electric version. However, the emails between the staff and the manufacturer don't support significant issues. There's no detail or authority cited in staff's report as to what those significant mechanical issues are. There is an email where staff is asking about EV reliability, and the manufacturer states that the EV models are solid. We occasionally run into software issues with our Curtis motor controller, but we typically work through it with them quite quickly. I know there were issues with a new controller that was rushed out, but as far as I know, these issues have been addressed. And that's the extent of the detail that's provided in the public records request. I did an internet search, and I found so many cities have electric parking enforcement vehicles. Santa Monica has 30, Santa Rafael has some, San Francisco has some, Berkeley has some, Missoula, Montana has several. And at the last meeting, I mentioned Friday Harbor, Washington's vehicle, and I understand staff reported to council members that that requires 18 hours to charge. That vehicle can take either a 220 or a 110. The 110, yes, takes a long time, and that's why EV owners always have a 220. The 220, that vehicle charges in five to six hours, and that's in the manufacturer's brochure. So I just asked the council reconsider its decision. I think it's troublesome that the CAP didn't have a say in this. The Climate Action Committee had done a lot of research on electrification, and I didn't even know about this purchase. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Michelle, if you can go ahead and unmute, please. Looks like maybe technical issue, please.
Hi, sorry, I didn't see the notification didn't come up. Hi, thank you. I am an Albany resident for the last, and over 10 years now, and I wanted to just chime in about the issue that Dr. Alpert had brought up earlier about notifications for construction after everything that happened with 1600 Solano, and it was just, this communication was just disastrous. And that issue, I know we're weighing, when it comes to construction, everyone wants more housing available. However, there's just, there's so many more ways in which that affects our community, especially given that Solano Avenue is so busy with businesses, schools, pedestrian vehicle traffic, homeowners, renters. There, it seemed like there was no consideration given to the effects that that particular instruction will have on traffic and vehicle traffic, and we don't have much in the way of traffic control. I've seen accidents in that in all up and down Solano Avenue in the time I've lived here. At least thought there was a pedestrian was killed right down the block from me a couple years ago on Solano District with a crossing guard, and we can barely handle what's happening now. So I just, based on the effect of increased number of cars alone, I'm, the issue, anytime new construction, you need to bring more people to the table for our discussion whenever there's significant new construction in the area, and having the minimum 300 feet just doesn't seem like enough, given the experience that I've had and my friends in the community have had with that particular project. So I would love for that issue to be brought to council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Staff, are there any items that you would like to respond to? Not seeing any items that staff would like to respond to. Councilmember.
Yeah, if I can make a comment. As one of the commenters noted, the city attorney explained at the May 20 meeting why notification distances cannot vary based on size of the project citing state law. So anybody who's interested in that, I encourage you to go watch her explanation.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Tiedemann.
Can I just ask staff, because this was a thing we heard about at our last meeting, do we have any update on the Pierce signage and our efforts to get in touch with them? I know we've had difficulty with that property owner, but I wonder if we've got any general updates.
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor Mickey. I was looking at my notes to jog my memory on what to respond to. Yes, we are continuing to work on that through our Community Development Department. Unfortunately, the individual isn't as responsive as should be, but we are continuing to work on it, and we do have steps that we can take measurably to ensure compliance. So it's an ongoing issue that we are working to resolve, and it is a priority, and we will do our best to communicate with those that have corresponded with the department as well, so they have the information directly.
Councilmember President, Jordan.
Thank you. Yeah, so I was wondering, City Manager, could you reiterate the status of Keynes and Adams? It was, I think, explained during the last, or during the consideration that the council had as an item.
I'll try my best. We are seeking grant funds to conduct the work that the council has authorized. There will be some design involved with that, which will find its way through Transportation Commission to the council again to make sure that we've got it right, and there may be some decisions still to make on that. In the meantime, we have what is currently existing, including the additional signage.
Thank you for that update. Not seeing anything else. We'll move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Looking to councilmembers, any items you'd like to pull for discussion? Not seeing any items from councilmembers. I'll look to members in the audience, any items that you'd like to pull?
712, please.
712.
I'd like to respectfully request that the council look at 76, 77, and 78.
That was 76 through 78?
Yes.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else in the room. Are there any members online who would like to pull an item? Okay. Let's see, items. Item 76, City of Albany's appropriation limit for fiscal year 2024-25.
Our interim finance director will help address these items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Reina Schwartz, your interim finance director. If I've got my items in the correct order, because I don't have my agenda, 76 is your appropriations limit for the upcoming year. This is an annual process. The state has a very prescribed process for determining what our appropriations limit, essentially the amount of tax proceeds we can receive and appropriate for spending. It's based on a base year back from quite some time ago that is adjusted every year for population and essentially spending power growth. And the item before you this evening adjusts our appropriations limit for City of Albany population and statewide per capita income growth for FY '25. The actual amount that comes in from any of our property tax revenues or other tax sources isn't directly affected by that calculation. The calculation started back in a base year and just increases every year. And then we count up what we get and appropriate for spending. So it's a fairly routine item, very well prescribed by state law.
apologies. Thank you for that update. Any council questions? Not seeing any council questions, public comment?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify if there is any possibility of Golden Gate Fields assessed value changing? And what would that potential change, improve or, or change the appropriations limit for the city? There are a number of properties in the city that are currently vacant and, and it's my understanding that the assessed value can be requested to be changed. And are we budgeting in a way that anticipates a potential change?
The appropriations limit is, again, as I said, based on a base year and then increased every year. So the, whether or not a property changes hands, the assessed value goes up or down, does not affect the appropriations limit per se. It affects the amount of, of spending we can do of those proceeds of taxes. So there is no direct impact, except that we would have more room under our appropriations limit, but it, it, that's a separate question from the budgeting where we would say, oh, maybe we aren't going to get that revenue. We're still below our appropriations limit, but we do need to make spending decisions, but not appropriations limit decisions.
Any other public comments? I want to thank staff for answering that question because that will play into comments that I will have later, based on my attending of the Alameda County Mayor's Association and the county assessor presented to us. So I will talk a little bit about that later in the meeting. With that, we'll move on to item 77, Proposed Authorization Adjustments to Local Taxes and Fees Collected on Property Tax Bill Fiscal Year 2024-25. Staff?
Thank you. So this is an annual item that comes in front of the council. There are a number of our special assessments or fees that have a process for a particular adjustment, which can be a maximum adjustment, or the council has, in most of those cases, the opportunity to have less than the maximum adjustment. Of those that are recommended before you this evening, only one is recommended to be established at a rate less than the maximum increase or maximum assessment. That's on the library side and all the rest are recommended to be at the maximum or there are no current provisions for an increase at all. So it's both the maximum and the minimum all at the same time. So on the library side, because we continue to collect those regular property tax assessments during the pandemic, the library was closed, we saved, we collectively, everybody saved operating funds at that point. So for the last couple of years, and I believe that the Assistant City Manager will talk about this a little bit under the library item that's under presentations, there is no current need with a very healthy balance in those funds for the maximum to be authorized for this year, so it's not recommended. Those funds can only be spent on library purposes, so collecting a large stockpile of funds for library services when there is no need to impose that burden on our community doesn't necessarily make sense. And because we retain the ability to increase that maximum at that same rate every year at the point at which those additional revenues were required for library services, that could be adjusted at that point, at some point in the future. So that's the, the only one of those that is not recommended at the maximum amount available to us. But it wouldn't, even if it were done at the maximum amount, it wouldn't have a general, an overall general fund impact. It would have a library surplus.
Thank you. Any council questions? Not seeing any council questions, public comment?
Thank you again. This is Judy Kerr from the Finance Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking for myself this evening, not for the council, for the committee. So I, I just, I, I support the increases. I support the holding back on some of the increases, but I'm just deeply troubled by the appearance of this agenda item in the consent calendar. These are huge issues for the city. These are expenditures, we are in a deficit, and we are talking about rote approval. I don't understand why we don't have a deeper discussion. Tax increases shouldn't be buried in the consent calendar. There needs to be greater transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any council comments? Not seeing any council comments. We'll move on to item 7-8, Fiscal Year 2024-25 Tax Rates for Pension Override Tax.
Thank you. This is a very similar item. This comes every year in front of the council. The original measure allowed for a particular percentage of the property tax that we can assess for the purposes of covering pension costs. That's capped at .09935, something like that. And we are recommending that the full amount be allocated this year or assessed this year. As the council is well aware, our pension costs continue to go up. So there wouldn't be a reason, given our pension costs right now, to consider anything other than the maximum assessment that we can charge under the provisions of that measure. And so that is what's recommended. That rate has been set in place for a very long time. And so it's, it's the application of that rate to the property tax bill this year at the same level that it's been for many, many years.
Thank you. Any council questions? No council questions, public comment?
Thank you, everyone. I, I just, again, want to underscore my concern that these are incredibly important financial decisions that are being made by you as a council, that are being made by staff. And I, I am very concerned that we're burying them in a consent calendar. I don't believe that, that financial issues belong in a consent calendar. I believe that these are issues that are fundamentally important to the citizens of Albany, fundamentally important to our taxpayers. And we, we do a disservice if we, if we just slide them in and don't comment. So thank you for listening to my comments.
City Clerk, any other comments? I'm not seeing any comments, any council comments?
I do want to thank County Member Kerr for coming and speaking tonight. I think these, these particular tax items are items that are perhaps more standard in that we deal with them yearly. But I will concur with you that I think, given the financial situations, the projections show our city to be in, that finances should always be in front and center in our minds in all actions that we take, much in the same way that the Climate Emergency Action Plan should also be front and center. So I thank you for your comments tonight. I do take to heart your comments about the need for us to be more open and transparent about the needs of the community, particularly from a financial stability standpoint.
We will move on now to item 7-12, Pierce-Cleveland Bike Way Connection Project.
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Mark Hurley. I'm the Public Works Director. So this project, we're asking three things in this, this council action. We're asking the establishment of a project and we're calling this the Cleveland, Pierce-Cleveland Bike Way Connection. This is a, what I would call the last piece of a long planned bicycle facility that's running along Pierce and connecting into the Buchanan Bike Way at Cleveland. The section along Pierce from the Richmond-Albany border to the end of the condo projects, 555 Pierce, is constructed and the piece south of Pierce Street Park is in process, the section going across the Saha Project. And then we're designing the section along Cleveland, south of that point, as part of a separate project that deals with paving, storm drain, and so forth. So this is a project that kind of closes that gap. And so that's establishment of the project. We're also asking for appropriation of $50,000 to start some design work in support of the project. And this does a couple of things. So this is a bit of a tricky location because we're going across the Parkway, we're going across, not the Pierce Street Park, we're going across the city owned parcel just north of the park. So we are looking to do survey work, alignment studies, topo, grading work, and, and costing, which will provide us a basis for submitting for a grant, which is the third item on the, on the agenda. And so that's, that's the project. This is, this is also an important piece because this area is going to be activated when the completion of the Saha Project. And this, this pathway through Pierce Street Park is really a key, key facility that'll drive a lot of the planning of sort of the kind of future activation of the park.
Thank you. Looking for council questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you, Director Hurley. You mentioned that the, the segment of the path, that Saha has built a segment of the path. Is that the segment on the entirety of the property? Because I seem to recall that the portion that's on the Peggy's, Peggy Thompson Pierce Street Park side is not going to be built as a part of that project.
So there is a stop and, and the path is going to be stopped at a certain point, but grading will go on a little bit further. So this mesh, this connects at that stopping, that stopping point and brings it along.
So is the, the portion that's been built by the project basically the portion that's on Cleveland and not the portion that's behind and up the hill?
No, the portion that's being, being built by, and maybe when I'm saying built, the, the grading work, there might be some paving work that we would have to do to finish it off. But for us, the big piece is understanding the grading and, and so forth.
I just remember, I just remember it couldn't be paved for, you know,
Fair enough.
Cost escalation, so I was like, wait, it got built?
Sure. But in the context of what we're trying to do, that's, that's a really minor cost.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Not seeing any other council questions, public comment?
I want to apologize. The reason I wanted to pull this item was actually about a segment of this plan that is not being considered this evening. But having interrupted anyway, I'm going to speak. I am Ken McCroskey and I'm a member of the Transportation Commission, speaking for myself, but with 15 years of experience on the Transportation Commission. And I apologize for staff for not engaging with them directly on this issue, but there was a time issue for me and I apologize. I support this presentation and I just want to address an issue that happens in another part of the project, which is along Cleveland, where there is currently not a fence between the street and the railroad tracks. I've been collecting news reports of train casualties for some years. In the last seven years, 15 people have been struck by trains in the Berkeley-Albany Railroad, Richmond Railroad Corridor. That's one about every six months. 13 of those people have died, one specifically in Albany, several on the borders of Albany. This particular location is a, a way to bypass the, the overpass and there's a well worn path. Creating a new pathway, which should be visible from the other side along Cleveland, will create an even stronger desire for folks to not go around. So in the future, when we start talking about the other segment, I would love it if you could authorize the study of additional fencing that could help discourage folks from crossing. There is a fence on the east side at that location. There's not a fence on the west side. The east side fence has been, how would you put it, Mark? It's been repeatedly breached and I would say that it's difficult to maintain, given its size and type. And there is no fence north of the Buchanan Overpass on the east side. Thank you very much and thanks to staff.
For your comments, any other comments? Any council discussions? Councilmember Jordan?
Yeah, thank, thank you for bringing that concern. Curious staff's thoughts on adding, you know, consideration of design of a fence, not necessarily to this project, but in general to the, whatever project involving this, this facility.
I think access control along that section of Buchanan is an issue. I think it is tricky in some respects because I think there's limited, what I have learned in this, there's limited right of way. There's areas where we have right of way, there's areas where we don't have right of way. In the topography, it drops, some places there's a shoulder and then it drops off pretty quickly in others. And I think we would want to do this in conjunction with UP too, to, to make sure we're doing this that meets standards and, and I don't know what their obligations would be to control access through their, their right of way either. So I think it's something we need to look at, but I think attaching it to this project makes an already tricky project very difficult.
And to be clear, I wasn't trying to attach to this project, just thoughts on it and those are helpful. And lend my support for looking at that issue in whatever context makes sense, in the future project context makes sense.
I would second Councilmember Jordan's comments. I'd love to see that either addressed, I'd love to see this, a discussion to begin as soon as possible. And if possible, incorporated into the active transportation plan, since in theory, we should be looking at all of our right of ways and all modes of transportation. And I think even if in the active transportation plan, it is simply pointing us in a direction so that we can begin conversations with the railroad companies. I think that would be really wonderful.
Just another question. I don't recall what the timing is for. Let's get another question. I don't recall what the timing is for the actual construction of the rebuild of that portion of Cleveland, would include the cycling facility on the west side?
I believe we're targeting sometime in 2020, calendar year 2025, so, but I can't, I'm not exactly sure what side of that is.
Yeah. So then that-
Has the engineering been done yet?
Engineering is in process.
In process?
Yeah, so I mean, this goes to get the conversation going, because once that facility's built, I agree that the desire line, you have a lot more people looking at that desire line to just go across the tracks. So ideally, if any way possible, that fence would go in simultaneous with that new cycling facility.
Or it-
I know.
Perhaps I'll put it-
I think we have the direction for now. I want to steer back on the agenda.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, I will look for a motion on the consent calendar.
We'll move consent.
I'll second.
Clerk?
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez is absent. And the motion passes.
Thank you for everyone who participated in the consent calendar. I will move on to Item 8, 8-1, fiscal year 2024-25 contract for additional library services.
Good evening, Council. I'm Isabel Le Duc, Assistant City Manager. So the item before you tonight is the fiscal year 2024-2025 contract with the Alameda County Library for additional library services at the Albany Library. So the Albany Library is a branch of the Alameda County Library, and county funding levels for library services limit the number of open hours to 15.5 per week. The branch is actually open 41 hours, and we contract, the city contracts 25.5 hours with Alameda County for the additional services. The fiscal year 24-25 agreement between the City of Albany and the County of Alameda for the additional services is in the amount of $725,440, the same amount requested for the previous eight years. And the City of Albany does levy two special taxes approved by voters to pay for the additional 25.5 hours. And as our interim Finance Director mentioned earlier, we do have a healthy fund balance in our, in the library fund, in the amount of approximately $670,000 as of June 30, 2025, 24, due to reduced costs during the COVID-19 pandemic. And the revenue that comes in from the taxes will be sufficient to cover the current, the contract coming up for fiscal year 2025. We estimate the number, the amount for the two special parcel taxes to be $810,020. So with that, I would like to introduce the Finance Services Director for Alameda County, Darshan Chada, who is here to provide additional information, and also Blaine Wenworth, who is the Albany Library Manager.
Good evening. My name is Darshan Chada. I'm a financial service officer at Alameda Library. So just to give you background, Alameda County Library is basically funded with property tax. So county collects the property tax, and we get about less than 1%, 0.9% of the total tax. And then we divide that tax among all the cities that our service area, based on their assessed value. And so that those funds, with those funds, we determine how much library services we can provide. And then there are some cities that they want additional services, they want us to open Sundays. So we have this kind of contract with Fremont, Dublin, Newark, Albany. So basically, this contract is ongoing for last so many years, even before my time, and the reason, if you look at this budget, the total appropriation is 2.6 million. And the property tax for Albany is, based on the assessed value, is about $800,000. 725 is the contract, and 1.1 million, we're still short to meet that appropriation. So library is putting that 1.1 million, and we are not increasing contract amount because this money is not coming from general fund. So this is a special assessment district with Albany, so that $700,000 is sitting in that fund. And we, as a library, we are in good financial health right now, so we can afford to fund this amount. And in future, like, if need be, we might be increasing, typically we increase 5% with other cities, like every year, based on CPA index, staff getting COLA, everything, cost of, everything doing, business is going up. So we do increase 5%. But for Albany, since this is not a part of general fund, and that money is not going anywhere, that is specifically for library purpose, so we are not increasing that contract amount at this time. And basically, so this is a rollover contract that we do every year, and we provide like 25.5 hours per week with this contract amount. With that, any questions on anything?
Just a question on the finance side. So revenue from the two taxes is anticipated to be more than the contract amount, which indicates to me, even without increasing it, I mean, my understanding of the strategy was to not increase it in order to try to spend down reserve, but even where things are at, it sounds like the reserve's going to even increase still, even without increasing the tax rate. Is that, am I seeing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This raises a question in my mind that during the summer months, when our students are, or the majority of our students are not attending school, if we have these reserve funds, if we have this extra money, is there the possibility of working with the Alameda library system to actually increase the number of hours just during the summer months?
That's your decision, like-
Sorry.
We need money to open-
Have any other communities attempted to extend library hours during the summer months?
Yeah, I think we do, like, maybe Ben-
You have a minute.
He is the Division Director overseeing all the library branches. He'll take that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Ben Gonberg, I'm Library Division Director for our community libraries. And there are certainly cities that have asked for a variety of different operating platforms. Summer is definitely our busy season at the library. We would entertain talking about this. I think part of the challenge is seasonal hires with the library are not going to be civil service hires, and there's going to be some complexity about how that may work in our operating environment. But if that's something that the city is interested in, we can certainly have further conversation about it.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? I'll open it up for a public comment.
Just one question here about the library services. It says that the library is open for 41 hours, which is wonderful. It says 25-plus hours are contracted out. Now, those base hours, how much are we paying for those base hours? Just to give context, just to give context to the value of the $700,000 that we're paying for the additional hours, if that can be provided.
Any other comments in the room? We'll answer all the questions after public comment. Any comments online? Not seeing any comments online. Do we have a sense, an answer for the question that was raised by the member of the public?
What was the question?
Yeah, repeat. The question was the, what is the 15 base hours? What is the monetary value of that, or how much does that-
That is $821,000 of property tax revenue. That funds like 15 hours. And this 725, although like, it looks like 800,000 is funding 15 hours, and 725 is funding 25 hours. But that's the reason that I explained, that we are not increasing it because that money, the $700,000 sitting in that fund, that belongs to the library. And we, we just want, since we are in a good financial health, we are contributing from our side. So we, I mean, we are saving it for a rainy day, basically. So, yeah, but $821,000 that property tax revenue, that is funding those 15.5 hours.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Quick math on your feet. That's great. I'll bring it back for council comments.
I just have one. Actually, I should have asked this earlier question. The two special taxes, how long do those go on for? Is there a sunset date on those? I don't-
You'd have to check.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when did these, did the special taxes come into effect? Sorry.
1997?
Yeah. One was 1992, and one was 1997.
In 1992? Oh, I was graduating Albany High then.
Yeah, I can't imagine they have a sunset, given how long ago they were passed.
We also have a presentation from the Albany Library Manager-
Oh.
Yeah, on activities.
Sorry, I jumped the gun.
Well, I graduated 30 years ago, when the library actually was open. It opened 30 years ago this year. So, yeah. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, thanks for having us. Yeah, I am thrilled to be here. I, as I just said, graduated from Albany High. I was going to mention when the Cert people were here, the one lady mentioned she moved here. I moved here because my house burned in the Oakland Hills fire, and then I moved to Albany. My mom's been here ever since, and my niece and nephew go to school here. So, yeah. And I just got back here in January. I've been working with the county for 12 years. And, yeah, I'm just thrilled to be here. So, yeah, this past year has been pivotal, as we adjusted to a new normal. We welcomed back our community in full force, engaging an average of 11,000 members each month. Our library has become a bustling hub of activity, with almost 15,000 materials checked out monthly. Our public computers are in high demand, averaging 50 uses per day, and we only have 10 public computers. Notably, our TechItOut laptop program, which allows for library in-use of laptops, has actually the highest usage in the entire county. So underscoring our commitment, we are providing accessibility to technology. Yeah, so, yeah. And additionally, we transitioned to an RFID system during the winter. RFID enhances our ability to manage library materials efficiently, and provides a more user-friendly experience. As the books are stacked here, you can check out all of those in one time, and check them in on a pad in one movement. So this system not only streamlines operations for staff, but also offers a seamless and modern experience for library users. Next slide. This year marked the return of Albany Reads Program, which was relaunched with Daschka Slater's Accountable book. And this book addressed a critical incident that actually happened right here in our own community. This program successfully re-engaged our residents in vital justice and community responsibility conversations. The discussions were profound, encouraging reflection and dialogue on social accountability, and the impact of media in shaping public perception. Actually, next picture. And there's Daschka taking, signing autographs, and, yeah. And then keeping with our commitment to cultural awareness and diversity, we launched a special book distribution during Black History Month, AANHPI Month, and Pride. These initiatives have been well-received, adding to our library's role as an educational and inclusive space to celebrate and educate on these critical themes. Additionally, we are excited about our, we just added a seed library, which offers seasonal and native seeds to the public. Let's see, we, actually, can we go back a couple? Just gonna, yeah. We, yeah, and then looking ahead, we are committed to fostering self-expression through various mediums in our programming. We have upcoming, in the fall, we're going to have feature art, poetry, zine-making, to increase and encourage self-expression. We recently, in May, on May the 4th, kicked off a live performance by a local band, I'd Rather Sleep, the one with the slash-style hair, actually is an Albany High graduate, just graduated this year. And, you know, we want to, this actually brought in, if you go to the next picture, we had almost 80 people come in, and the majority of them were new people to the library experience. And, man, let's see. And then, yes, those are the pictures. If we go to the next one, we just started our summer reading game, our summer adventure. As you mentioned, the summer is a very busy, popular time. Our new theme is engaging the senses, and participants of all ages are welcome and encouraged, all ages, of course, so everyone can play, are encouraged to read books and complete engaging activities, and you can earn a book and prizes. We kicked off on June 1st with like a four-hour event that was well-attended and had a bunch of enthusiasm. And, yeah, in conclusion, this year has been, we've seen significant growth and renewed connections. Albany Library means a cornerstone, remains a cornerstone of learning, discussion, and community support. We invite everyone to continue engaging with us, providing feedback, and participating in our programs. People mentioned sustainability. We would love to see programs like that at the library. So anybody who has thoughts of bringing programs to us, email me. And these submissions were from the first week. These are all kids who earned a prize by turning in their artwork, and we're just showcasing it. Yeah, we are excited about what lies ahead, and I am committed to continuing our mission of enriching lives and expanding horizons. Here's to another year of meaningful impact and community enrichment at the Albany Library. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Oh, I did leave off one thing. Sorry, I missed that. I did want to mention that we, that I'm excited about this, that we're going to be starting bilingual storytimes. We're starting with Spanish. I talked with the school district and found out the other leading languages spoken in the community at home. So we will be bringing a Mandarin, and a Tibetan, and hopefully a Nepali.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that was, that was great. Thanks. That was really exciting. Thank you for doing all that, and welcome home. I believe you were commuting to Union City or Fremont?
I was last night.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah. So he was making a long commute, so.
He's a Berkeley resident. I'm very happy to have a two-mile commute now.
Yeah, yeah. And thanks for making the return of Albany Reads focused on accountable. Obviously, highly valuable to do that. And in terms of your idea, Mayor, I think that's a great idea, and I would support staff exploring that possibility of having more hours during the summer. And in that regard, my understanding is that even though the, even though we voted not to raise the tax rate, or the two property taxes that fund those extra hours, the allowed increase is banking over time? Is that, is my understanding correct? In other words, if we can increase 3% a year, and we don't use the 3%, we don't lose the 3%, it's building up over time. So even if getting those additional hours would be beyond, maybe 110,000 we're getting, we have some amount, and I think probably at this point, a substantial amount of headroom to raise it to get those hours, if the council so chooses.
Sure. Also, apologies. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it sounds like- No, I was just going to say, it sounds like we need more computers and laptops is what we really need, right? Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it's not often that we, as council members, get to say, there's funds that aren't assigned to something. So, while I did raise the idea of extra hours during the summer, I think this is a good question about what is, we have an opportunity to invest more in our library system, whether that's more technology, whether that's more hours. I love this idea of a seed library. If we have a seed library, can we work on the alone, I'm really getting off track here. I think I'm getting a little fortunate. Sorry. I really love the idea of the seed library. I've had lots of dreams about the Alone Greenway. I had a great meeting with staff to hear that they have great dreams for the Alone Greenway. Seeds in a green area, maybe there's a connection there. But my bigger point just being that I think if we have the ability to think creatively of how to make the library be more reflective of the community, to be, have the resources that we need, and we actually have the potential of using some funds, while I want us to be cautious and not go and spend all of our savings in one, one big pass, it would be interesting to have a conversation about what, explore ideas of what could happen with some of those funds, so.
Staff may, well, not know the answer to this, but on the, following up on the technology, is the language of the measures, do you know, does it allow spending on what essentially would be like a capital expenditure rather than increasing hours?
I will have to check to make sure.
Okay. All right. And then, I guess, keeping to the theme of me doing math from the days, so I think that's nine pieces of material per year per resident is being checked out. So, that's pretty, pretty substantial.
If you're looking for motion.
I'm going to pause one second, sorry. I realized I asked for public comment before we had this wonderful presentation, so I am going to ask if there's any public comment. Allow anyone, anyone in the room, anyone online? Not seeing any public comment, I will entertain a motion.
And I will move Resolution 2024-51.
I second.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanser Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez is absent, and the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, for, for a wonderful situation where we have money we can spend, potentially. Moving on to item eight dash two, Amendments to the Second Year of City Albany Biannual Operating Budget, Current Fiscal Year 2024-25. I'm slightly nervous that this may not be as fun and rosy, but maybe you'll be surprised.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm still Raina Schwartz, your interim finance director, and I'll make this about as much fun as I can make budget amendments, which, I don't know, we'll get rolling. So, the item before you this evening is to bring forward a few minor amendments to the FY25 budget. The city, next slide, please. The city adopts a two-year budget, was most recently adopted in June of 2023, covering both the current fiscal year and the upcoming fiscal year, FY25. The budget for 2425 was approved with approximately a $2.2 million potential shortfall in revenues over expenditures. The recommended adjustments before you this evening reduce that anticipated potential deficit a very small amount to about $2.1 million. But as I will sum at the end, you know, this is really the first piece of what I think we're going to be looking at for FY25 budget. I do think there are, there's a need for us to continue to work toward identifying how to bring our budget into balance, whether that's in FY25 or FY26 and beyond. And so, we will be continuing to talk about that this fiscal year. The goal for this evening is really to talk about kind of a few high-level adjustments that are recommended as we lean into the very beginning of the fiscal year. So, next slide. On the revenue side, there are a few increases. The increases include new franchise fees from our recently approved agreement extension with Waste Management. The second piece is the agreement that we have with the University of California at Berkeley. That memorandum of understanding, MOU, was approved pretty much right at the same time as the budget, so the budget couldn't include those revenues until after the MOU was approved. So, for FY25, we are recommending that we officially adopt those as part of the budget. We have received the first $400,000 payment of those revenues in this year's budget, and it's one of the reasons that FY24 has, the revenues are buoyed up a little bit by that because it wasn't included in the budget, but it has come in. So, that is a, a positive for us in '24 and will be budgeted in '25. The last piece on the revenue side that is an adjustment is, you'll see on the next slide when we get to it, on expenditures, that there are some public works programs that require some additional funding, those that are eligible for gas tax funding. We're talking about everybody's favorite topic. We're going to transfer in more revenue from the gas tax fund to the general fund. Those costs will be borne out of the general fund. And because they're eligible for funding with gas tax, we will transfer in gas tax monies to pay for those, and there is sufficient gas tax funding to allow us to do that. On the not-so-great side, there are a few decreases. We've talked before about how the sugar-sweetened beverage, or SSB, tax is trending a little bit lower, both because overall sales tax revenues are coming down or flattening a little bit, as well as perhaps we're finally more successful in encouraging people not to drink sugar-sweetened beverages. The second areas on the sales and use tax side, that $179,000 is the approximate sales tax value associated with Golden Gate Fields businesses. And so, the closure of Golden Gate's fields will result in a reduction in those sales and use tax numbers, as well as the racetrack tax, which will also go away as a result of the closure of Golden Gate Fields. The net change across those items is a positive of about $330,000, so there at least is some slightly positive news in that regard. Next slide, if we talk a little bit about expenses. On the expenditure side, there are a few relatively minor increases. Police data storage as our first contract around body-worn camera storage, that is a new cost that we will be bearing. A correction to the debt service for the fire engine that was purchased a couple of years ago and put in service in '23. We just need to correct the numbers so that we've got the full debt service budgeted for that. The biggest cost is associated with the agreement that you just approved with your consent calendar for the Albany Firefighters Association. In the base budget for FY25, there was an approximately across-the-board five percent increase to labor costs made. That was to include cost-of-living adjustments, step increases, all sorts of labor costs. With the specifics of that additional memorandum of understanding with the firefighters, there is another couple hundred thousand that will be required for the FY25 budget. And then, as I mentioned, there are some public works projects, just under a hundred thousand. Those are listed specifically on the summary of specific recommendations having to do with street trees, some emergency response costs, et cetera. On the decrease side, there are a few little decreases on the expense side. The CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability, UAL contribution, we know what that number will be, and it's a little bit less than we anticipated when we adopted the two-year budget. And similarly, on the insurance side, we made an across-the-board assumption about how our insurance costs would change. There are a few minor changes to that that will save us a little bit of funding or a little bit of cost. The net change across those expenditure items is an increase of about $250,000 in additional expenditures. Next slide. In your report, you have a version of this that's probably a little bit easier to read, but this provides a summary of all of the recommended adjustments, including some of the more details on the public work side, as well as a handful of items that are not in the general fund, but they're just adjustments that we needed to make anyway, so we will include those. But the creek storm drain, two storm drain items are not in the general fund, so they have no net impact on the general fund. You can see that the net effect of the recommended adjustments is a positive of about $80,000, still leaving us with approximately a $2.1 million potential deficit of revenues not sufficient to cover our expenditures. And as I mentioned, while there, the adjustments in front of you this evening are relatively minor in the overall context of the budget, there's still work for finance staff and the departments as a whole to do within FY25 to ensure that we have a plan in place. If, during the course of the fiscal year, we start to see that we maybe are heading toward that potential deficit, that we have a plan that can be brought forward with recommended adjustments to the budget to ensure that we stay in good financial stead and that we end up with a balanced operating budget. That's something that is, is not only something that we will continue to work on in FY25, but for FY26, '27, that biannual budget, that we will be looking to bring our operating budget into a balanced approach on an annual basis so that we have more certainty as we're planning that we won't, you know, we'll be less likely to end up in a deficit if we can plan for a balanced budget. So, with that, you also have in your report this evening comments from the Financial Advisory Committee. There obviously is some concern, both on the part of staff, the city manager, the council, the FAC, everybody, that we start to really put some specifics to the belt tightening that maybe we've seen coming for a few years. And so, that is reflected in the comments from the FAC that are in your staff report. You also have a couple of members who will likely be here to speak this evening under public comment. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Looking to council members for any questions? Not seeing any council member questions, we'll open it up for public comment.
Hello again, Judy Kerr. I just want to commend Raina for an excellent report and an excellent support of the Finance Advisory Committee and, and of the city in general. And thank you. She's doing a tremendous job, from my perspective, as a complete novice and complete non-financial person. I just appreciate her ability to present information in an understandable way. Two million dollars of a $30 million budget is a bucket of coins, and it's not appropriate to walk away from that tonight without reflecting on the deficit that we are facing going forward. Earlier this evening, you approved $50,000 for a grant, I'm not even sure what it was, but Pierce Street has some kind of potential access for bicycles and pedestrians. That's the kind of minor decision that you're making on a daily basis, on a, a meeting basis, that needs a little more scrutiny, a little more attention to the detail of what that impact is with the full, full budget. That's $50,000 that's not being spent on repairing the Alone Greenway, repairing sidewalks, making sure that what we have in place is appropriate. We're not in a position to be looking for ways to spend more money, whether that is potential grant funding or whether it is simply money that we're spending because it's a nice thing to do. We need to look more closely at reducing our expenditures. We need to look more closely at potential revenue enhancements. In, in June of last year, we came, Kim and I came before you and had some suggestions from the Finance Advisory Committee about potential revenue sources. None of them were acted on, others were. I believe that tonight we may act on more sidewalk taxes. I, I just wonder if we're looking at the overall picture, if we're looking at the overall trajectory of a $2 million deficit in a $30 million budget. So, I hope you'll listen to all these thoughts and that you'll be more mindful of the impact of the taxpayers on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Kim Traynor. Thanks for having this time for public comment. I wanted to just bring us back a little bit to the big picture of the general fund balance. That's a city policy that the general fund balance should be a reserve of 25% of the approved city expenditures. And the approved city expenditures for fiscal '25, per the adjusted budget, are approximately $33 million. So, if you multiply that by 25%, that means we need $8.3 million as a general fund balance. I tried to do a little math to calculate where we might end up, should this budgeted deficit actually come to pass as of, you know, at June 30th, 2025. And what I started with was the June 30, '23 general fund balance per the audited financials from June 30, '23. And there are actually two different numbers that you can work with. There's about $11.4 million unrestricted fund balance. And then, there's also a $9.2 million unassigned fund balance, and that's a bit of a nebulous number, but includes a number of things, just going to list a couple things. Prepaid assignments. So, the financing for the fire engine that was put in service in fiscal '24, I believe is in that prepaid assigned, prepaid, I'm going to say it wrong, prepaid assignment. And that fire engine was placed in service in fiscal '24, so that will come out of there, out of there. Also, there are some other things, prepaid multi-year cost of software subscriptions and some other things like that. And these things will be amortized off. And so, my point is that the, the real general fund balance is going to be somewhere between $11.4 million and $9.2 million, but we don't know what exactly that number will be. But let's just assume that it's $11.4 million at June 30, '23. And then, if we calculate in the forecast deficit, we're pretty close to a break-even, so we've got about a $39,000 forecast deficit for fiscal '24. And then, we've got a $2.1 million forecast deficit for fiscal '25. So, if we start at $11.4, that takes us to $9.2 million for the general fund balance at June 30, '25. So, that gives us about $914,000 of cushion, wiggle room after that. And if we are, if we're short on that $11.4, then even less. So, I think that it's just very important to consider deficit reduction wherever possible. Thank you.
Apologies. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments inside the room? Not seeing any in the room, any online. I'll bring it back for council discussion.
All right. I, I do agree with looking for more ways of generating revenue. That's, that's something that I've talked about for a while. And I really do appreciate Raina for all your work, and, and I echo your sentiments of, she explains it very clearly, and I thank you for that. I would like to, I mean, I believe that I'd like to hear, as we start to move forward, some more ideas about what we can do, what we can do differently, what, where different funding sources can come from. And just, and I know that you're probably working hard on doing that anyway. And just, and I know that you're probably working hard on doing that anyway, but I look forward to some more options in the future as we continue to move forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yeah, this is a, this is a difficult, tricky subject. So each of the three years that I've been on the council, it's been a projected 1.5 to 2.4 million deficit. And what has been realized is surplus of 1.1 to 1.6 million. So because of that spread, it's hard for me to take deficits that are projected seriously. They're based on 100% staffing, which obviously is impossible, that never happens. I understand why the budget has to be constructed that way, but in reality, that's not going to happen. And even this year, the projected deficit at the point of adoption was 1.3 million, and we here were basically break even. So I temper my fear with that, which, you know, may not be appropriate, but it's kind of a cry wolf situation. I have worked hard to raise more revenue for the city. I led the campaign for Measure DD in 2020. I led the campaign for Measure K in 2022. I started the effort that led through staff's great work negotiating, because I only got it going. I wasn't in the room when the negotiation happened. And I recall UC's first intimation and offer was $200,000 a year, and then somehow staff got it up to $400,000 a year. I don't know how that happens in a negotiation. I've never heard of one side being able to negotiate the other side up that far. So commend staff in that regard. So, yeah, so I'm just a little bit at sea on this. I will also note regarding the SSB tax, that as of the accounting at the close of the fiscal year 2023, the city had taken in $615,000 more that had been spent on what it had programmed, which was more than a third, it was close to 40% of what was taken in. So that tax has been supporting general expenditures. And I think the situation with the SSB is perhaps similar to the situation with stop waste, in the sense that I think some of that money needs to be programmed to help to continue to extinguish consumption of SSB. You know, in other words, if we ramp down the spending on that exactly as per the revenue, even though we've underspent in the earlier years, and we're at risk of not fully attaining the goal. So in that regard, I know what's proposed is only $2,000 for the AUSD Giltract Farm Educational Program kickoff. And at our study session, we had arrived at a number of about $36,000, and I would like to fund that fully. We just heard tonight that the deficit is $81,000, projected to be $81,000 less. As I've relayed, those deficits have not materialized. I'm not saying they never will materialize, but they have not materialized. And I don't think that that amount of spending is going to break the bank one way or the other. A lot of work went into that by the community and by AUSD to set up that program and that proposal. This amount of money is less than what they asked for already, and I don't want to let that work just go by the wayside.
I will mostly agree with Councilmember Jordan. I've worked on some of those same tax measures. I was in the room for some negotiations with staff, with UC, to get that addition to our budget, and we thank them very much for it, both staff and UC. I'll say that I am, you know, sensitive to the concerns. I think our budget deficit in the future, given, and I think it's always worth emphasizing here, that a big portion of this is due to increasing pension liabilities. This is not Albany has misspent its funds or overextending. It is that every city is facing a challenge that is going to get more and more for the next five or so years. And we're all going to have to figure out how to do it. So it is a real thing to be concerned about. It is not something that I think has hit us quite yet, that, you know, the sky isn't quite falling. It's good for us to be aware of it and be cautious about it. But I also want to really appreciate all of the effort that goes into our budget to make sure that we, we're not doing the obvious thing we could do, which is to cut services, God forbid, cut staff, not explore new projects that improve our city. You know, that's, those are all the bread and butter of what I think a city needs to do. And we, I really appreciate all that goes into trying to get us to a balanced budget, given the difficulties of that, the difficulties of estimating years out and dealing with fluctuating property taxes and other things, and the closure of Golden Gate Fields, and all the other things that can happen that kind of throw our careful planning out of whack while really taking a lot of care to not just, you know, take away a lot of the core things that I think we need to be doing. So I think we will continue to be wary of that, as we have been. And I think we are considering a lot of ways to increase our revenue. Councilmember Jordan mentioned a lot of them. We have, we will have probably a couple different taxes on our ballot this time around, and we will probably have more on the next ballot and possibly the next ballot after that. At least, that's my goal. And that's not, that's to say nothing of some of the other things that will be on our ballot that are regional in nature, that will, so, you know, we always have to be balancing what people are going to be willing to vote for with need to kind of always be having some amount of taxes on every ballot. And I think we are really trying to walk that tightrope now, and are going to be talking a lot more about that in the next month or so when we approve everything on our ballot for this year. But it's, it is not because we are ignoring this issue or not taking it seriously, we think we are and our staff are. It's just we are working with the best information. And as Councilmember Jordan said, historically, we've done well if we've not realized those deficits. And I'm hopeful we can continue that. It will get more serious, and we will have to do more planning to avoid it, but I think we can.
I guess it's hard for me to cotton to the idea of having a balanced budget, because if we'd had a balanced budget, then we would have been running, you know, a $3 or $4 million surplus over the last few years, which wouldn't make me feel that great in terms of the taxes that we're levying, that we were going that, you know, collecting that much more revenue and was needed operationally. Now, obviously, we could have done things with that revenue, and we need to do things with that revenue. But again, I didn't come onto the council with awareness of this, but I've learned over the years, over this repeated experience. And so, again, I'm in a sort of a tricky spot psychologically about this.
Yeah, I'm, I think the thing that makes me most nervous is the cry wolf scenario. You know, keep hearing about deficits and we're not realizing them. And I think, really hope, what I'm looking for in the next time we do our two-year budgeting cycle is a hard conversation about we are listing staff positions that we essentially never fill, or because of changing in staffing, we don't, we don't actualize a greater deficit because as we hire someone, someone else leaves. And I, I say that we are starting to get to the point where we have to ask those questions because we need to make sure that if we make an offer to someone, we can actually afford to keep them on staff, or that we're not going to lose another position. And I balance that with saying that we also need to make sure that we're not asking our staff to do so much that we're burning them out because they are waiting for that other person to help them, right? But this constant cycle of we know CalPERS will keep increasing, but we also have this weight on our shoulders of, well, if we fill all the positions, we're going to actualize a $2 million deficit. And Councilmember Jordan, I would say if we actually were in a position where we net profit an extra $3 million, that means maybe we could be moving forward faster with some of our capital improvement projects, which again, I think for many in the community, they would love to see us doing the capital improvement projects. For instance, one item that has come up is we keep fixing our sidewalk, our intersection ramps. We can only afford to fix them, but we can't afford to do the storm sewer work that often is needed in conjunction with them. If we had $3 million extra, we could be putting that into a capital improvement project so that not only are we making the ramps safer for everyone to use, ADA accessible, but we would also be dealing with our stormwater issues. And so that is one of the issues I have with generally the way we budget. I don't, again, I'm learning all of this. I want to understand better how in our next budgeting cycle, we can be more realistic about how many positions we can add so that we're not having this constant, well, it's $2 million, but we actually only are going to actualize 60,000 of a deficit. And that just seems like a really bad trend, because as I'll talk later, the Assessor does not have a rosy picture for the Bay Area. And so part of what has helped buoy us is reassessments in our community. And so I want to, I want to be really cautious about that. So that's not really a comment on this year's budget, but it is a question about when we do our next two-year budget cycle.
I'm also just going to chime in here. I think, you know, part of the reason that the Financial Committee came into existence was approximately, I believe, six, six years ago, was it? Does anybody, roughly? Because there were, there were some, some issues with some balancing and some budgeting and things that weren't happening that, so I think, granted, you may have seen a cycle of it, there's, there's a lot more stuff coming into play, coming down the pike, especially with businesses and the densification of housing and everything else that are just, we don't know how this is going to continue to impact us. And I think it's too short of a time span to be reliable on what has happened the past couple of years, if that makes sense. So I just want to caution to that tale.
Yeah, I mean, I cited the last three years, it goes back further than three years, that there's been projected deficits and then actual surplus. In terms of the Financial Advisory Committee, it was founded when the treasurer position went from elected to appointed. So that was, you know, a move that we were still getting for that community advising, since the treasurer was a, was a community member. So I think as, as one of the members indicated, that was about 2021. So it wasn't specifically in response to a financial situation, it was in response to a change in governance structure.
I thought I had remembered councilperson Nason bringing it up at one point in a meeting a few years back, so that's why I was referencing that, so.
I mean, she was very good on hitting the theme of needing more than a two-year budget or more than a two-year projection, which I think we've received information from staff that staff is working towards a longer, a longer budgeting period, maybe not in a specific budget to the dollar, but, you know, having more of a five-year forecast. So I thank staff for that. With that, I'll move Resolution 2024-52 with the one adjustment of adjusting the $2,305 for the Joint Giltract Farm Coalition, Albany Unified School District Education Program to $35,844, which was the number that the council discussed and came to in its study session.
Is there a second?
Could you just say that again, so we have the right number? Because we're trying to make sure all the math works.
Yeah, that's fine. So the current number, as I understand it from what was in our materials, is 2,305. And the number that the council arrived at in its study session was 35,844. And so I know that the unassigned fund, if my understanding is correct, both has to have 25% of the budget plus cover the deficit that is projected. But because the deficit is going down by 81,000 with these adjustments that are proposed, presuming the unassigned fund, I don't know if it was sufficient to cover it, but we've gotten 81,000 better, given the deficit that was an adjustment that is in front of us. And so taking part of that back, it'd be about $33,000 of taking back that $81,000 and programming it into funding for this joint education program.
So the fabulous chart that we have, we would be adding a line to that chart that would be an increased expenditure of 33-ish, we'll get the exact number, and that would drop the 80,000 to a 50,000, or whatever that math is.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I completely understood, because we will need to provide the clerk with an amended attachment to the resolution. And so I want to make sure that I get that correct before the clerk tells me that I didn't get it correct.
Much appreciated.
Sorry, and I was verifying, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Right. Discussion, I have discussion. So I raised during the sugar, sweetened beverage tax discussion that I was cautious that in the sugar, sweetened beverage taxes, we were, again, providing way more than we actually had to spend, with the understanding that in one sense, we have banked while we didn't really bank previous years. And at the time, I was only prepared to authorize the lower number that was asked of, which was the 17,000. It did limit the program, I believe, to elementary and middle school, or it was a much more limited program. And I would guess, offer a counter motion of us actually authorizing the 17,000 that was requested as opposed to the full 35,844.
Well, I mean, the full request was 52,000, the full proposed request. So the 33,000 was already cutting off a number of the schools. And so my read of the minutes was that we agreed to this 35, I'm sorry, 36,000, let's call it, 36,000 less money couldn't be found, in which case it would be 17,000. So we're sort of two numbers in the minutes from that meeting. And I'm saying, given that there's this over $600,000 of revenue that's been taken in from the sugar, sweetened beverage tax, that, and we have this $81,000 that the deficit has gone down, that we can afford to do this. And part of my concern for us as electeds up here is we have a good deal going with the voters. They are trusting us to spend the money as they recommend when they pass these taxes, and in return, we're getting a passage threshold that's 50%, and that's the tacit deal. And if we don't honor that deal, at some point, somebody's going to figure that out, and we're going to lose that trust, and then we're going to have to go to two-thirds to pass anything.
I've got a quick question. Being that the Giltract Farm project is what it is, and educational throughout the school district and stuff, is there any way of partnering, like, the surplus of library funds into, into sponsoring any of the programs or anything? If they, I mean, they have a seed library project, it seems like it, there was some way of coinciding, you know, meshing this whole thing together. I don't, I mean, is there any way of sponsorship, none of that, huh?
I thank you for asking that question, because I wondered the same thing. I'm really wanting staff not to answer that question so that I can keep that dream alive.
And I won't answer.
We like positive answers. Even, we'll look into that.
I think the partnership opportunity should first look to the school district as raising the interest in this program, and I'm not quite sure that the district is providing any funding. So that might be a question for the council. In terms of a specific question on the library taxes, no. It wouldn't be an opportunity, at least with the way the program is established now. There could be other partnerships through our county library system with this entity and obviously with the school district.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that Ms. Marlopez is not here tonight, because he's a representative to, I don't know, it's a working group, I don't remember the formal name. But I know from my conversations with the relations person, if you will, at the Giltract Farm Coalition, that we're essentially going to go to the Farm Coalition, that we're essentially going to go to the chancellor's fund. So the chancellor runs a sort of community granting fund and essentially use what was discussed to be contributed by the city to try to leverage a grant out of UC to complete that $50,000 plus. And so to me, that's another reason for us to go forward. So yes, it's not partnering with AUSD, but I think there's a good chance, and Albany has gotten basically zero of those grant funds in the past, it's pretty much all gone to Berkeley. So I think we have a pretty good chance of supporting them in succeeding and leveraging the money that we put in to get money from that grant fund.
Seeing that I didn't get a second on my counter motion, I will just add, if we think again of this as seed money to start the ball rolling, I can be comfortable with this money being spent, as you described, 35,844. But I do want to make sure that, I'll reach out to Councilmember Lopez and see if he can help facilitate conversations with UC's chancellors as well and saying, if the city's willing to put some money up. I think it is on me as mayor, perhaps, to reach out to the school district and see about long-term planning of how we can do cost sharing here. Again, my hope is on these kinds of special projects, we are incubating a project that finds its own self-funding through grants, through sponsors, corporations, whatever it is, so that these programs become self-sufficient.
Yeah, I would also, you know, being in the background of fundraising for different organizations and, you know, different entities, I'm actually kind of surprised that they haven't been working on that kind of sourcing for revenue as opposed to, you know, coming to the city and asking for all of it, because I know that there's a lot of sponsorship opportunities out there. There's a lot of companies who are really moving, driving forward with more projects like this. And I really think that there's a huge opportunity being missed to get a lot of this funding, not necessarily directly out of the city or even directly out of the school district. But I do think that the school district should definitely put their foot forward as well. So, you know, I feel like that funding can come from other sources. So I, yeah.
Not seeing any further discussion, we have a motion on the table. City Clerk, can we have a...
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez is absent, and the motion carries.
Thank you to staff and thank you for everyone who participated in item 8-2. I am going to ask that we take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back at 9:25, 9:26. Thank you, everyone. We're going to head and get back on the agenda. We'll move on to item nine, public hearings. Item 9-1, proposed amendments to the City of Albany Master Fee Schedule.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Cassie Murphy, Finance Manager, just have a few talking points to introduce the item. The city's master fee schedule is a document that details various fees charged by departments during operations. Annually, the schedule is updated to take effect July 1st of the new fiscal year. Proposed rates are found using a few methods. Historically, several of the fees that are increased follow the Consumer Price Index, CPI for Bay Area for all items. The CPI for this year is 3.66%. In addition, aside from the CPI, departments coordinate with finance to update charges as appropriate for operations. This may include new fees, adjustments outside of the CPI, be that an increase-decrease, as well as removal of fees that are no longer needed. Some topics from the staff report, just some department highlights. First off, community development, proposed changes that more closely align fees with the cost associated with operations and included some new fees. Public Works removed fees that are not relevant to the department. Recreation adjusted the fee schedule for rental of courts to line up the availability of the courts with the requested usage, and that included opening up commercial rentals for all courts, as well as allowing rentals per court rather than necessitating the entire court be rented. Police Department conducted surveys of fees of nearby cities. Any fees that were under the average were increased to be closer to what is seen in the area. In addition, a newly required concealed weapons permit process was adopted by the department, and along with that, a new fee schedule was implemented. The draft of the master fee schedule was published pursuant to government code and in preparation of tonight's hearing. So that's it. With that, I'll turn it over to council.
Thank you for that presentation. Looking to council for any questions. Not seeing any questions from council. Look to the audience for any questions. Not seeing any questions. Oh, we have one member in attendance.
Hi. It's a question as much as it is a comment. Cassie, thank you for your summary. There are a number of items on our fee schedule that don't exist in other cities, and there are a number of items in other cities that don't exist on our fee schedule. And I think it would behoove us to do a comprehensive review of the fee schedule. I appreciate and I respect that departments have looked at things. But examples of things that are charged in other cities include cert training includes a registration fee. We don't, as far as I know, charge for cert training with lots of good reason, but we are at a deficit despite some council members' insistence that that's not real because it hasn't been real before. We are facing a deficit. Restaurant operation fees, there's a number of things. We have fees for bees and goats and chickens, but I'm not sure we really actually have bees and goats and chickens that are causing us expense or generating revenue. So I think a comprehensive overview of the fee schedule is called for, and whether it's a subcommittee of the council or an assignment from the council to staff, I'm not going to direct what you think is right, but I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any online comments? Not seeing any online comments, I'll bring them back to council for discussion.
Yeah. I'd just like to thanks the Finance Manager for your presentation and staff for putting up with some nitpicking changes I had and implementing those and working through that conversation.
Is it Member Romero?
Along with our fees here, my question is, I guess, on, you know, some of it is making sure that those fees get paid. Is there any sort of implementation for just a checks and balance on when we're asking for, and I'm just bringing this up because, like, was brought up earlier about just any of the property providers that may not be registered in the business license or any other kind of fees that we might be overlooking that we're not collecting that we should be collecting? I would be encouraged to find out, yeah, if there are other fees that we're overlooking that we're not charging that maybe we should be also implementing in this.
I will say that with the current vendor that we're using for business licenses, part of the reason we went with that vendor is they do have a discovery process to identify rentals, as one that we've discussed with them, as well as other businesses, if they advertise or they have a way to check data against the city location, be that parcel taxes or other items. So that is something that could be more possible since we've moved to a new system. But I will say that it is an area that we struggle with due to limited staff. It's a good point.
I hadn't heard that aspect of switching to Avenue, if I remember the name of the company that's doing the implementing correctly. So I'm probably encouraged by that. I know staff has made progress over the last four years or so on increasing the percentage of residences that are actively rented as counted by the census that actually have business or paying business license taxes. So thank you for doing that. And I'm encouraged that there's a strategy to moving forward on that. So thanks.
I want to thank the public comments. I think it is important for us to continue to look at those opportunities that we perhaps are not collecting either fees that we could be. And I appreciate staff's efforts to remove things that are no longer needed. I think that is something that in particular I'd like us to continue to understand. I will talk about it again when we get to, when I report back in Albany County Mayor's meeting, about opportunities again for collecting additional funds. But would be, I think... But would be, I think, behoove us to have an opportunity to work with staff to figure out how to do a more comprehensive look at all the fees that we potentially could be leaving on the table, so.
I would certainly agree with that, and if you're looking for a motion, I will move resolution 2024-53.
Second.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez is absent, so the motion carries.
Thank you, staff, and thank you all that participated in that conversation. We'll move on to item nine dash two, public hearing on the levy of assessments within assessment district number 1988 dash one for the fiscal year 2024-25.
This is the second step in our annual process for levying this assessment. Per the Lighting and Landscaping Act, the city council is required to take number of actions each year that the assessment is required to levy. This is a group action of the correctors of the assessment district. So these actions include adopting a resolution directing the assessment district engineer to file a report. Oh, great. I hope you didn't leave here because I'm too anxious to talk.
Great. How's that? Should I start from the top or continue? Okay. Thank you. So these actions that the city council is required to take each year include, first, adopting a resolution directing the assessment district engineer or the engineer to file a report. Second action is adopting a resolution preliminarily approving the engineer's report and directing the city clerk to provide notice of the intention of the council to levy and collect assessments within the existing district for the next fiscal year. Third action is to conduct a public hearing upon the improvements budget and assessments that are proposed to be levied. And fourth, adopting a resolution confirming the diagram and assessments for the next fiscal year and authorizing filing the diagram and the assessment with the county auditor prior to August 1st of the fiscal year in which the assessments are to be levied. So on June 3rd, 2024, the council adopted three resolutions. Resolution number 202439, initiating proceedings. Resolution number 202440, preliminarily approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 24 to 25. And resolution number 202441, declaring the intention of the council to levy and collect assessments and setting today, June 17th, 2024, as the date for the public hearing. Lighting and landscaping assessment district 88 dash one provides funding for the installation, maintenance, and servicing of park and recreational facilities throughout the city, including maintenance and repair of landscapes, hardscapes, play structures, and irrigation systems at city parks, Memorial Park, Ocean View Park, the Totlot Park, Dartmouth Totlot, Aloney Greenway, and Peggy Thompson, Pier Street Park, and maintenance of street landscapes in the public right-of-way, as well as providing support for our urban forestry program. The assessment has not changed from last year's assessment and is set at $75.54 for single-family residential parcels. This assessment has in fact not increased since fiscal year 1993 to 1994. And with that, that brings us to the part of our evening where we need to conduct the public hearing, and then the council needs to take action on the enclosed resolution confirming the diagram and assessment and levying the assessments for fiscal year 2025, and then ordering the levies to be placed on the fiscal year 2025 secured property tax rolls. With that, I will pass it to Mayor Mickey.
Thank you. Look to council questions. Not seeing any council questions. Look to the public. Any public comments? No public comments. Any council discussion?
I will move resolution. I think you might have to, like, open and close the public hearing. I think there's some official.
I was wondering if I should say something, but you got there first.
We referenced the former mayor of Emeryville, and he always would bang open, bang close to make it.
Sorry, I'm going to look to Mala for some help with the language I'm supposed to use. Sorry.
I think when you opened a public comment, you, I presume you were opening the public hearing and when no one wanted that they would like to speak, you were closing the public hearing, and I think.
Thank you.
Okay. I just didn't want to miss a step and have to come back. So I move resolution number 2024-54.
Seconded.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes. Noting when I was mayor, I often skip that beat as well, so.
Vice Mayor Lopez is absent, so the motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to item nine dash three, revenue measures for funding core city services, sidewalk parcel tax update, public hearing.
Thank you again. I am, for those who are tuning in for this item, I am Devois Zoder, Public Works Program Manager, and the matter before the council tonight is to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed updates to the city's sidewalk parcel tax with the intention of presenting the updated parcel tax to the voters on the November 2024 ballot. The action tonight also includes adopting changes to the city's sidewalk policy, which has been updated in accordance with changes requested by the council over the past eight months. City's current sidewalk parcel tax, also known as Measure P1, has been in place since it was adopted by the voters in 2016. This tax invested taxpayer dollars into a city program to upgrade and repair sidewalks throughout the city, which by state law is the responsibility of the adjoining property owner. I know that council has heard all of this before several times, but for those who are tuning in today, I will restate a few key details. The Measure P1 tax has levied approximately $1.4 million in the eight years since its adoption, of which approximately $1.7 million has been expended to date to support eight completed project phases of sidewalk repair and upgrades. The work in these eight projects totals over 400 locations throughout the city, replacing and upgrading approximately 61,100 square feet of sidewalk. The current sidewalk parcel tax is scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2026, after 10 years of levying the tax. Should the tax expire without replacement or renewal, the program will not be able to continue without this funding. Staff brought the matter of revenue generation for city infrastructure to the city council in October of last year in accordance with the city council's strategic plan goals. In the eight-month sense, staff has worked with city financial consultant NBS, as well as the city attorney's office, to develop potential scenarios for tax renewal, extension, and/or update. Council provided the following direction for updates to the tax over several meetings this year, which have been incorporated into the city's sidewalk policy and into the proposed ballot measure for the upcoming 2024 election. The proposed tax update, which will completely replace the existing tax, includes the following. Revision of the tax methodology to calculate the tax by lot square foot instead of parcel-sized brackets. This method includes a cap of $6,000 per parcel affecting the largest parcels in the city. Update also includes adoption of the tax for a new 10-year period beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2035. Make sure my math is correct. Updating the annual inflation adjustment from a 2% to a 3% maximum to remain consistent with limits on other city special taxes. Extending the eligible activities the tax can be used for to include maintenance and repair of Class 1 multi-use pathways such as the Aloney Greenway, to include support for staff costs to run the program and execute projects. The sidewalk survey performed every five years, which provides key data for project scoping and prioritization, and sidewalk maintenance activities to extend the life of sidewalks, such as sidewalk shaving. This update also incorporates a new 50% discount for low-income households in addition to renewal of the existing 100% exemption for very low-income households. And lastly, to support all of this, the tax update proposes increasing the revenue target to approximately $392,000 in the first year to provide support with annual increases per the 3% or CPI escalator to provide support for the expanded activities and provisions noted previously. All of the noted changes are incorporated into the proposed ordinance included with your report tonight and the accompanying sidewalk policy. At this time, the next step in this process is to hold the public hearing today so that members of the public may speak on the matter and be heard. Once the hearing is completed, staff recommend that the council adopt resolution number 202455, approving the updated sidewalk policy, and resolution number 202456, ordering the sidewalk tax measure to be submitted to the voters of the city at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, and directing staff and the city attorney to proceed accordingly. And with that, I will turn it over once again to Mayor Mickey to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Looking for any questions from council members? Not seeing any questions from the board for, I'll open the public hearing. And we have public comment in the room?
Hi. Thanks again. I just want to speak in favor of this. I think the sidewalk tax that we have had has been a real boon to the safety for pedestrians across the city, and I want to really speak in favor of it. With one admonition and one, I don't know whether it'll come under policy or recommendations to staff, but increasingly sidewalks in Albany are being utilized by wheeled vehicles, wheeled transportation devices, scooters, electronic, electric bikes, whatever. In some ways, we sort of invite that because the Aloney Greenway is a shared pathway, and that's fine. But once the other sidewalks and other pedestrian right-of-ways within the city are breached by those wheeled vehicles, it becomes a perpetuating factor. So I'd like to suggest that as we approve, we move this to the city for approval, for the residents and the voters for approval, we think about the possibility of simple things like putting on the sidewalk a sticker that says pedestrian only or ticketing people. I mean, that's a bold move, but something to really acknowledge the fact that there are pedestrian-only sidewalks and people over the age of 14, some 14-year-olds are pretty darn big, people over the age of 14 should not be on the sidewalks in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any online comments? Not seeing any online comments. Any council discussion?
I think the, if I recall correctly, I think the age limit for riding on a sidewalk is 16, currently. So I think we just received a comment to lower that. That's not a part of this, part of this item, but it's interesting to consider. Thank you for the comment.
Yeah, again, thank you for the comment, and I think it is something that I think we as a council continue to talk about. I think it's something that we can continue to work on, especially through the active transportation plan. I'm putting a lot of weight on our active transportation plan, but I think one of the things I had on my mind for that was signage, and I think the idea of signage that helps emphasize that our sidewalks are not intended for motorized vehicles would be beneficial as well. As one who uses an electronic e-bike, I do not use the sidewalks, but I have seen people of various ages riding on sidewalks, and knowing that my e-bike can go 20 miles an hour, that's going down a hill and really pedaling hard, but that is way faster than anyone should be going on a sidewalk. With that, I will, let me see if I get this right, close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion.
I'll move resolutions 2024-55 and 56.
I'll say.
And just before the Financial Advisory Committee member leaves the room, since I was pretty hard on the budgeting earlier, I do want to emphasize that my understanding is that should this, should this motion pass, should the voters approve it, this will essentially boost the general fund by $150,000 because it has been spending money on staff time to run the sidewalk repair program and has been spending money to do the sidewalk grinding. So this is of some benefit to the general fund.
So we have a motion, and it's been seconded.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez is absent, and the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We will move on to item 12, council subcommittee reports, council member reports on appointed representation of Albany and other meetings and events. And I will look to Councilmember Tiedemann, who always has a notebook full of notes.
Because I'm on many committees. So one last, I have exciting news, but start with the boring stuff. We had a meeting of the A-Bag Legislative Committee just this last week. There were several pieces of legislation nibbling at bits of either BAFAs enabling legislation or about ACA 1, which is the measure to reduce the threshold for bond measures to 55%, which is very important. That's being changed a little bit to make it more likely to pass, so that's good. We also got a budget update about the state budget, which if we think we've got budget woes, we got nothing compared to them. Luckily, the legislature has passed its version, which has much fewer cuts overall, especially in some of the biggest areas like transportation and housing. So there's still much more runway to go about which version of the budget gets passed, but that was encouraging to everybody on that committee, and we're waiting to see how it goes. We also had a meeting of the Ava Community Energy Executive Board, as well as the full board. Both, great news there. First, we looked at Ava's budget for this next year. Due to softer energy prices and changes in the PCIA, users will see their rates go down this coming year, so that is very good. Ava's still in a very healthy place, but we'll see those rates go down on our side at least. Transmission costs, that's PG&E's job, and they keep increasing those. So it's always good to emphasize the difference. We also, I'm very happy to say that after a lot of work, including by myself as the chair of the selection committee, we hired a new CEO for Ava, Howard Chang, who was the previous CFO, who the board unanimously approved and had great confidence in, and I suspect he may be coming to visit our council at some point in the near future to introduce himself.
Thank you for the update.
I could just ask a question, Mayor. Well, one, thank you for serving on the search committee and as the chair. I know that can be a lot of work. I don't know personally because I've never agreed to do such thing.
It was a lot.
Yeah, yeah. You said the PCIA, which is the power, charge, indifference, I can't remember what the A stands for.
Power, charge, indifference adjustment.
Right. And so, you said that's going down. I don't know if you know why it's going down, or if you could explain. I have a guess, but.
Maybe it was not exact enough. So basically, what is projected is that because energy prices have been a little softer recently, there was an adjustment down to rates for this next year as they were essentially high and were a little bit too high. So PG&E did some adjusting and had its forecast come out, and our budget, you know, shifted to accommodate that market change. The PCIA is kind of counter-cyclical there, so it. The PCIA is kind of counter cyclical there, so it actually is going up a little bit, but because energy rates are going down a little, it, the net for customers is that they will face a lower cost for Ava. So the, there's a bar chart I can send you that shows this, but basically, PCIA is going up. It was pretty minimal, but the overall effect is that the rates are going down.
Bar chart. Be still my heart.
There's a lot of them in that presentation, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jordan, any updates?
Yeah, sure. The Programs, Policy, and Legislative Committee of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, that's a mouthful, met, and there was an update or an annual report on the Safe Routes to School program and the Student Transit Pass Program. And both, you know, continue to be very exciting, both are expanding. The number of students who veiled themselves of a pass, despite it expanding the number of schools, expanded from 42% to 44% of students, which, you know, is even more of an accomplishment when you think they're bringing, still bringing new schools into it. Yeah. And the number of, I think the number of trips that were estimated based on the surveys of the Safe Routes to Schools program that were done by active transportation was like 1.5 million or something like that over the school year.
Thank you for the update. Councilmember Hanson Romero?
I have no updates.
Thank you. I have one update, well, actually, I guess two. One is I attended the opening of the pickleball courts. As I mentioned before, it was a lot of fun. I will do better in my third game. I have a committee member who I have to play against next time so that I can perhaps win this time, but. My teammate was Nick Peterson, and we did great. Nick did great. I will practice and try and get a little better and, and keep up with Nick. I also attended the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, and thank you, City Clerk, for bringing up the slides. I think the important slide that I wanted to highlight was slide number seven. And so we, Assessor Fong did a great job talking about a bunch of numbers that he threw at us, and I think one that really stood out was the real property conveyance tax. So Albany has a 15 per thousand of full value. That's in keeping with a lot of our neighbors. However, a lot of communities also have a stepped system. So you can see Berkeley has 15 per thousand, just like us, but that's for 1.6 million dollars or less, well, I guess and less. But when you go above that, it changes to $25 per thousand. And so that's something we could consider as a community. You can see Emeryville has something similar. They actually have three price breakpoints. Oakland has many price points, but it is something as a community we can think about doing as well. That's an opportunity to think a little bit about stratification of where, where we might want to implement some change. Something that the assessor said offhand was the city of LA passed a tax change where properties over 5 million, I believe up to nine, or just under 10 million, have a very large, it's 5.75% tax. In addition, they have another tax that applies that is another percentage, and I will, apologies, I don't have the numbers in front of me, that is meant for, specifically for affordable housing. And so what they, they in that community decided was that at a certain price point, you can sell your house for that much, but you're going to not only be paying a higher rate in transfer tax, but you'll also be helping support affordable housing. There is also another bracket point, I want to say at 10 million or something, there's, and that number gets even larger. One thing that the city of LA found was that a shockingly large number of houses started selling at $4.9 million. And while one could say, well, that's a shame, they lost the opportunity to get the money for the affordable housing, it was also a way of looking at potentially kind of nudging the market to be like, hey, like, maybe we shouldn't be going so high on the prices, one way to think about it. So I bring this up because I think as we have talked about tax revenue opportunities, I don't know that we need to go as complicated as LA, but I think there are opportunities here for us as a community to look at ways of matching our neighbors at least. And just as a point of reference, many of the houses in Albany are starting to sell for over 1.5 million, so.
We have sold exactly 139 homes over the 1.6 in, as long as the MLS is in existence. So there you go.
Perfect. And so it's something for us to consider, you know, and, and, you know, I did, I don't want to get too far in discussion, but I do want to convey conversations I had with the assessor. I did raise a question about whether or not there was a way to account for if a property had an ADU, could you actually give them a, could it be based on, if you had an ADU, you actually got a discounted rate? The assessor said, yes, that you could. No one's ever done that. You could. But how would the assessor know that the property actually has an ADU? And I said, well, technically, the assessor should know about anything that's permitted as an ADU. And so if there's a permitted ADU, the assessor should have that on file, and so they should be able to verify that. Again, I'm not proposing that that's what we should do. I think there needs to be a conversation about this. My hope is that we can work with staff and look towards 2026 as a ballot measure, so. So that was the bright news, that there's an opportunity for money. If we go to the next slide, City Clerk. The bad news is the role percentage gross change. So all you really need to do is look at the second line there. Albany had 6.79% increase. Then we had a 5.99% increase. Then we had a 4.79% increase. That number is going down, and the assessor expects that number to continue to go down. The average for 2023, 24 year was 4.5, so we're slightly above the average. But the county assessor expects that number to go down. And why is that important? Because that percentage change is what's been keeping us above a major deficit. And the assessor's office expects that number to keep going down. He did not go through all the reasons, and I'm sure there are lots of reasons. He'd love to come talk to us more about this, or you can call him, and he'd be happy to talk to you. He loves talking about this stuff. It's quite, quite a wonderful person to talk about it. So just something to understand, that we have had a great run, and we, my understanding is, he has been talking to finance departments, and my assumption is he has talked with our staff about their expected, you know, changes, but it's going to go down, is what the assessor says. The last thing that he talked about was reassessments, and he said, just about everyone who's a business comes in and asks for 50% off their assessment. And the assessor says, why? And he says, well, we like 50% off. And then there's often a negotiation and discussion. Not every company gets 50% off, but a good number managed to get 50% off. That is not something that is just given outright. There is an investigation. I raise that because if the bowling alley hasn't already asked for a reassessment, they probably will be. If Golden Gate Fields has not asked for a reassessment, they probably will be, which means that those revenue numbers could be going down. So again, I started with a rosy picture that we have the opportunity to increase our revenues, but there, there is some concern to be thinking about.
So my knowledge, the Golden Gate Fields property has not been reassessed, you know, it hasn't changed hands technically in at least the 30 years I've been here. So when the reassessment happens, they're reassessing against, I mean, do they have to make an argument that their assessed value is more than the market would assess the value right now? What is the argument that they make?
Great conversation for the assessor.
Okay, all right.
One of the things to note is businesses are not only taxed on the real estate value of the building, but also any tools or manufacturing devices in that building. So one example that was given, you can have a building in San Leandro that was historically an Amazon distribution center. Really doesn't get taxed that high because it's just the land in the building, but as soon as some of those buildings switched over to R&amp;D, all of a sudden you're talking about the assessor's office taxing on the, you know, robotics inside the, the R&amp;D center, the various machinery that they have. And so the assessed value of that switch from a warehousing situation to a R&amp;D and manufacturing place is actually quite huge. And one example that was brought up was Tesla, because they are the largest taxpayer in Alameda County. And a lot of it, very little of it had to do with the building, and all of it has to do with the robotics in that factory. So that's all to say that, you know, maybe we should get some R&amp;D or, you know, businesses in Albany, so. But that's my report back. Sorry, that's long, but I think I wanted to just emphasize that we are, our revenues are likely not to be as strong next year. With that, if, unless anyone has any questions, I will move on to, let's see, oh, sorry, public comment. Not seeing any in the room? None online? We'll move on to future agenda items? Any public comments on future agenda items? Any online? Any councilmembers' requests for future agenda items? I'm going to request that we, not anytime soon, because it'll be 2026, but I would like a future agenda item about the real estate transfer tax and possibilities there.
Actually, I will remove a future agenda item that I brought up previously. I'll remove an item that I brought up previously with thanks to staff. So I believe I had brought up previously restoring Albany's previous energy reach code, which provided incentive to, not a requirement, but an incentive to go with all-electric and new construction. I want to thank staff, Director Bond, obviously the city manager, for transmitting the information back and forth, for letting me know that even though the city went through that process with the California Energy Commission to get approval for its reach code, that was under the previous building code, which is on a three-year cycle. I didn't realize it was specific to a building code, and so since we've adopted a new building code, we would have to go through the whole thing again, and that code runs out in 2025. So even if we started now and did all, well, staff did all the work to get it, would, you know, only be enforced for a short period. So I am rescinding that request now that I have that information. Thank you, staff.
And just to be clear, that's because in 2025, we will discuss that anyways.
Yeah, because that's the beginning of the next three, three-year cycle, so staff's suggestion was, if you're willing to wait, that would be more efficient use of staff time, and because someone else is like, sure, I'm willing to wait.
Thank you, and I both appreciate your willingness to pull that back, and I appreciate staff letting us know when we're asking something that might be more efficient if we wait, even though, as a councilmember, I will, sorry, as mayor and as a councilmember, I'm not always one liking to wait, but. Let's see, with that, I will, not seeing any of the future.
Oh, I was just going to second that. I do appreciate when city staff lets us know, hey, this might not be a good use of our time or money. So that is much appreciative in many ways.
Not seeing any other items for future agenda. We'll move on to item 14, Announcements of City Meetings and Events. If you go online and see the posted agenda, you can see future city meetings and events. I will emphasize the, sorry, the opera on Solano, sorry, what was it called?
La Boheme. Out of the Box.
Out of the Box, sorry, Out of the Box. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all who took part in today's meeting. If your loved one is experiencing thoughts of suicide, a mental health, or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress, call or text 988 to speak to a trained crisis specialist. Thank you, everyone. Good night.